Council meeting to order, the date is November 4th, 2024. The time is 7:30. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to relinquish the floor to our mayor, Mayor Hushour, for our presentations portion of the agenda.
Hello, thank you. We got a lot going on tonight. There's a lot of presentations, so gotta stack them up back here. I'll start with this. This was not on the agenda, but it is a proclamation that was delivered by Senator Fulton. We had our Rails of Trails ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, and he was unable to attend, but he sent us this really nice proclamation. We had a lot of dignitaries out there. County Executive was represented by Steve McCain and a couple of council members, and we had Senator Van Hollen's aide out there. Nan Man came out and gave us a proclamation, so we appreciate all the support on that. Rails of Trails is certainly a wonderful feature, so if you haven't walked it, head out toward Hill Street. You can get on the trail or Rambling Sunset Circle. It's a beautiful .6 miles of trail to enjoy. Next proclamation. I'd like to have Pete Ballas join me up here. How are you, Pete?
Good, yourself?
Very good. So it's always great to see you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep. We have a proclamation here. This is a certificate of recognition from the town of Mount Airy to Pete Ballas Recycling and Sanitation Commission from 2004 to 2024. That's a career.
Yes, it is.
In recognition of your devoted, hardworking, and selfless service as a recycling and sanitation commission member, the time and effort that you have given to the town is greatly appreciated in its volunteers like you that make Mount Airy what it is today. And that's signed by myself and the entire town council, and I greatly appreciate everything you've done for the town, not just in the sanitation commission, but also through the Historical Society and other events in town.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And you're welcome to say a couple of words if you'd like.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate this, Mayor. Thanks. Thank you very much. The 20 years have really gone fast. A lot of trash through the old truck. Anyway, thank you very much. There's one other person that I need to thank who's not here with me tonight. I know she's watching on the television. But Carol, thanks for all those nights. Thank you. And all those clean shirts. I really appreciate it, and I love you.
It's great, Pete.
Thanks. To the residents of Mount Airy, you know, 20 years really went fast, but I see there's openings on sanitation recycling, and there's been there. On the sanitation recycling, as with all the commissions, there's a lot of really good people here in Mount Airy. And if you're not on a commission or hadn't thought about it, I'd encourage you to think about it and find a commission and be on it, because it's very rewarding, very rewarding. Thanks, Mayor.
And thanks for that public service announcement. So it's great. Let's see.
So he's running for what next year?
It'd be great.
All right. This is a proclamation from the town of Mount Airy supporting Small Business Saturday. Whereas the town of Mount Airy, Maryland celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of the firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of the net new jobs created since 1995. And small business businesses employ 45.9% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 59% of the consumers aware of Small Business Saturday shopped at or ate at small independently owned retailer or restaurant restaurants on Small Business Saturday 2023, and whereas Mount Airy, Maryland supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore, I, Mayor Larry Hushower, and the town council of Mount Airy, Maryland do hereby proclaim November 30th as Small Business Saturday, and urge our residents of our community and communities across the nation to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year. That's our proclamation for that. Isella? This is Isella Bravo from the county executive's office, and she has come up here from Frederick County to join us with a proclamation celebrating Operation Green Light. I'll hand this to you, because it's your proclamation.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, and County Executive Fitzwater regrets that she can't be here this evening, but she did send me, and we're very pleased to be a part of this today. Whereas residents of Frederick County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all those who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Frederick County seeks to honor individuals who have made the countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and studies indicate that the 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas Frederick County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, now therefore, as the county executive of Frederick County, Maryland, I hereby proclaim November 4th through 11th, 2024, as Operation Green Light for veterans in Frederick County, and to commend this observance to all of our residents. Citizens are encouraged to join in honoring veterans by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence during this week. Signed, the county executive of Frederick County, Maryland, Jessica Fitzwater, presented this fourth day of November 2024.
Thanks. Thank you. Yeah, this is something that we've been doing in our town for a few years. I'll give a shout out to our local resident, Josh Marks, who is always big on reminding us about Operation Green Light and coordinating with the counties to make sure that it's recognized. This year we are lighting up the Flatiron Building again. You'll notice it's glowing in green tonight, and we'll set up the front of Town Hall as well with green lights and go that route. And since I went through Walmart today, there's about six more boxes of green lights available if you're interested in doing your porch, but that's only six lucky residents out of 3,600. So, thank you. Okay, and while we're doing this, veterans in the audience, if you could stand, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, last one here. All right, this month is also known as Municipal Government Works Month, and this is a proclamation for that. The Town of Mount Airy Proclamation Municipal Government Works Month. The mayor and council of the town of Mount Airy proclaim November to be Municipal Government Works Month. Whereas the town was incorporated in 1894, and whereas Maryland is home to 157 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. Is that true? Yeah. They have direct contact to us. So that was a joke that fell flat. I'm sorry. We try. We try. They may not have been paying attention. Moving on. Whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the town of Mount Airy is proud to promote municipal government awareness, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore, now therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the town council of Mount Airy do hereby join the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November to be Municipal Government Works Month. Thank you. So that was an adjustment. All right, thanks so much, and that concludes all of our proclamations for this month. Thank you again for coming out, Isella.
All right, next up on our agenda, we're at the public comment portion. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak during the public comment? Sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm Larry Vallée from Mount Airy. I'm with the Historical Society and the Flat Iron Task Force. So council president, member and members and mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's my understanding that a motion may be made tonight to allow Brennan and Company Architects to move forward with the construction design plans as the next step in the Flatiron project, and I just want to lend my support and encourage the town council to approve the proposal so the project can move forward towards the next phase. This year, the town of Mount Airy received a $150,000 grant to help cover a majority of these design costs, and we were fortunate that we did not have to pledge the full budget towards a grant match. So accordingly, I feel that an expenditure from the Flatiron budget to cover any remaining costs of the construction design would be prudent and would substantially move the town towards a shovel-ready project. And it's my understanding that the construction design will ultimately break up the project into manageable bite-sized pieces, which could then be tackled one step at a time, as financially expedient and as the town council allows. And I feel that this step-by-step approach is a wise one and will provide the town with some financial and architectural flexibility as progress is made. In the meantime, I want to assure the council that the Flatiron Task Force will continue to pursue fundraising efforts at various levels and seek to build organizational alliances with other organizations who could help us with this project. It is almost more important that this construction design phase be completed. It's typically in this phase, which appeals towards legislative support at both the state and the federal level to provide earmarks or line items inclined to support shovel-ready projects. And I want to thank each of you, as well as our town staff, for all the work and effort that the town has put into this project, and specifically want to thank Ashley Collier, the manager for community development, for the outstanding and aggressive work she has done in pursuing and will continue to pursue a variety of grants on an annual basis. And before I close tonight, just for fun, I worked the museum on the weekends, and I just did a little math over our guestbook. I just want to leave the town with this thought. Every weekend, the Mount Airy Museum keeps a guestbook of visitors who come not just to visit the museum, but to visit the historic town. And maybe 50% of our visitors sign our guestbook. But I did this math for this year alone, and by our estimation, we've easily had over 10,000 visitors to our little town, which come not only just from the state of Maryland and Mount Airy alone, but from across the United States, as far as California, New York, Georgia, Florida, and Texas. In addition, we've had visitors to our little town from all over the world, to include many countries in Europe, New Zealand, Taiwan, and even Syria. And I speak with these people, and they arrive at the Baltimore Airport, excited to tour the United States, and they drive Highway 70, and then they see our historic Mount Airy sign, and they pull into Main Street. Our town has a great appeal and is an idyllic piece of Americana, and it is a draw for historical tourism. And I feel that this project will help preserve our town's status and appeal towards that goal. So I thank you for your vote of support tonight and appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Jeffries. I live here in town. I'm a member of the Flatiron Task Force, and I wanted to speak tonight in support of the mayor's proposal to move forward with Brennan and Company and the additional funding needed for the full design of the Flatiron Building. Firstly, on behalf of the task force, we wanted to thank the council for your continued support of the restoration of this historic piece of Mount Airy. We all know that this project is not a one-time decision, but is a series of decisions as the process continues, and your ongoing support is not just greatly appreciated, it is greatly needed. So thank you. Like Larry mentioned, we've been awarded a $150,000 grant, which will significantly defray the cost of the full architect design of the Flatiron, the next step in the restoration process. This grant covers over 86% of that expense needed. We are so close, but still need the last 14% to move forward with it. As you know, some grants require a match-for-match contribution, and it is my understanding that this one awarded, that this one was awarded to us that did not need that. So while asking for the additional $26,000 may seem like a lot, it is much smaller than if we were required to fully match that grant. I think most will agree that it is imperative that we take advantage of any grants awarded, so we don't lose them if they aren't used in the fiscal year. It would be foolish to assume that any grants requested moving forward would be guaranteed to be awarded to us again. Since inception, the Flatiron Task Force has raised over $50,000. That figure strictly pertains to fundraising efforts and does not include any grant money that we have also been given. I would also like to point out that the money garnered has also grown each year. The task force raised over $15,000 year one, $17,000 year two, and over $20,000 this year thus far. We still have a VIP seating raffle for the Christmas parade that has just started, as well as restaurant fundraisers in the works. We are confident that as this project continues to gain traction, the funds raised will also continue to grow. We assure you that the task force is not going anywhere, and we will continue our efforts raising funds and getting the word out to the community. Like the saying goes, a rolling stone gathers no moss. It is important to continue our momentum moving forward. Even when the green light is given for the next step in this project, there will still be a waiting period until the step after that, and then the one after that. The longer we wait to start the next step in the process, the longer we have to wait for subsequent steps. And so I respectfully ask that you vote to approve the mayor's proposal and start the next step now, so we can hurry up and wait for the following one, and continue preserving this historic building for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the approval of council meeting minutes and closed minutes and other minutes related thereto. We will begin with the October 2024 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
To approve?
Oh, yes, sorry. To approve the Town Council Meeting Minutes from October.
All right, I will second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the October 7th Town Council Meeting Minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Next up, we have the October 2024 Public Hearing Minutes relating to the Anexation Resolution 2024-46 for 1.3189 acres of land located at 4111 Twin Arch Road. I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the October 7th Town Council Public Hearing Meeting Minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? Next up, October 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes, subject of land acquisition. I will make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the October 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Closed? All right, thank you. Next up, we have our Civil Air Patrol report with Major Rolf.
One more closed meeting.
Oh, did I forget to skip one?
Pending litigation.
Sorry. I checked off the wrong one.
You're just trying to get it.
October 2024 Closed Meeting Minutes, as allowed by 3-305 subset B and 7, for pending litigation. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the closed meeting minutes.
All right, I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the closed meeting minutes from October, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Major Rolf, now you're up.
Good evening.
I didn't have the sheet. Good evening, how are you?
This is our report for October 2024. Under mission significant activities, the squadron sent one member along with 15 others from across the wing down in North Carolina to support the Hurricane Helene relief efforts down there. The specific activities mostly included manning points of distribution to hand out food and water to local residents down in Asheville. And by one member, I mean that guy right back there. The squadron's cyber patriot team completed its first round of competition, and one member also provided planning and execution support to the wing's rocket today, which helped train nearly 50 cadets from around the state. Under community support, the squadron provided road closure support for the Mount Airy Oktoberfest event, and I want to say thank you publicly to MAMSA for a generous donation that they provided to us after the fact. This event also finished off our busy season of community support over the last six months, which saw us providing over 400 hours of volunteer service to the community. Qualifications and achievements, we had our small unmanned aircraft system, UAS, pilot completed his additional endorsements for flying more complex systems, so it broadened the range of what he's able to fly for us, and provided some initial qualifications to become a flight instructor, so we can actually help train more and more of our folks. We had multiple members complete additional FEMA training to, related to points of distribution, to support the upcoming deployment. And not on here, we had one member also complete recertification of first aid training and CPR. We had four cadets participate in orientation flights, three new cadets joined the squadron this past month, and as operational status, our ground team remains fully mission capable and ready to go. We also continue to have multiple individuals that can support UAS and mission-based tasks as necessary. On the horizon, we're supporting, actually just did support, the Maryland STEM Festival Carnival in Frederick with assistance and setup and an information table. Also, along with two other squadrons, we'll be marching in the Brunswick Veterans Day Parade next weekend, and we have several members planning to attend the wing's annual conference in mid-November. Finally, November is also one of our biannual donation drive months that we'll be holding as well. Depending on your questions, I complete my report for the month.
Questions? Quickly, so Alex went down?
Yes, sir.
And did Graceful go down for a while?
She did.
Can, Alex, can you come in here? You guys, I mean, you think about this, you know, this young man went down to, were you in Asheville?
Yes.
Went down to Asheville after Hurricane Helene, which I guess was a tropical storm by that time, but everybody saw just how bad it was down there, and I think we owe you a round of applause for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you got anything you want to tell us about it?
Not, Alex, not really. Thank you, though.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate what you do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Major, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking in the audience, next up we have our Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company report. I don't see Matt here. All right, so we'll skip that and go to our Mount Airy Police Department report, but Chief Ginever. Good evening, chief.
Hello, everybody. How are you today? So Chief Ginever, Mount Airy Police Department, meetings and trainings attended. Senior Officer Betcher was recertified in Lynx Training. I attended a couple of meetings in itself. All the officers except for two that are not certified in rifles, and all the officers continue their updated annual training. I like to spend a little time with the community outreach. October was a busy month for us in itself. So senior center, I was with the Quanis Club, along with the fire department. They handed out some teddy bears. The teddy bears in itself, when they were distributed by the Quanis Club, is for any critical incident in itself that the police department or the fire department comes involved with in itself. For us to give some of the bears, and it's not just for children. I know we try to associate like teddy bears, kids, and stuff like that, but sometimes adults in itself, just having something of a bear of a remembrance in itself in some sort of critical moment, sometimes somebody needs just something to grasp onto in itself. So it was great. The Quanis Club gave out those bears. There was a gentleman there that had a nice story to send out to us of why the teddy bear is in itself. So that was great. We did Oktoberfest. A lot of the guys were involved with that from the police department. From there, we went to wagon tails over at Watkins Park. And then from there in itself, which I'm definitely proud to be a part of in itself, and several members that we built our team was for the Making Strides Breast Cancer Walk that we did for the Mount Airy team. So overall in itself, I believe we had a total of 40 members for our team. We had the largest team there for the breast cancer. And overall in itself, that Ms. Mary from here from Town Hall shared, again, another great support role that she played, and several other ladies that were involved in that helping, is the Mount Airy team raised over $8,000 for breast cancer. So I'm really proud of that and thank everyone that joined the Mount Airy team. What great support all the way around, and again, it was great. Mayor walked with quite a few of the team members. So thank you. We also participated in the Fall Festival hosted by the Mount Airy Daycare and Learning Center. Officer Wright, one of our newly officers from lateral lathering over, and Officer Betcher participated in that. And then from there, we went to the Fall Fest, which Dan Hazrati, the Keller Williams Realty Center, hosted that event. That was a large event, great outcome with that, that we participated in that also. At Tractor Supply, we were invited over there. There's a retired sergeant from Baltimore City that now manages that place in itself. He gave a call out to me. He used to be a floating sergeant that I had way back when in the early, or excuse me, late 90s, for First Responders Day at Tractor Supply. So there we offered Officer Brandon Wright's participation to check some safety seat belts for kids and stuff like that, and a couple of the other officers were there too, and Officer Klezak. Just wanted to share a couple of these. I got these a little late. I didn't put it with my packet in itself. And these were done by some parents and some young kids of what, you know, thank you for your service, again, thanks for your sacrifice. And a lot of these, you know, kids, and like I said, there are some notes in here from adults and stuff like that about keeping the community safe. So again, I just wanted to share some of that, that wasn't not noted in my report, but I received them today to share that in itself, which they'll be posted at station for the other officers to see too. So again, that was a really nice event for the officers to play a part into that also. Then again, I'm quite proud and honored in itself. We got to participate in the trunk-or-treat. Halloween is one of my favorite things to participate, not only personally, but here within the police department itself. As it was hosted by Twisted Rods of Maryland and Mount Airy Police Department, along with some of my family members, participated in that, and our theme was some heroes from Marvel's event. Marvel's Avengers and stuff like that, so we won first place for the best decorated vehicle. So I'm pretty proud of that, and again, in itself, even though last year we were kind of, we had to give, give up our winnings in itself, but again, a lot of fun in itself. And then for trick or treating in itself too, the guys got to hand out candies and stuff throughout the neighborhoods. So again, it's nice seeing the guys that are involved with the community beyond certain things too, and the Making Strides, the wagon tails, so again, October was quite a busy month for the guys to come out of that shell rather than just pulling cars over and answering calls. For recruitment, we have one lateral applicant that's in looking for a lateral position, and then we have currently four applicants that have applied for the police lieutenant position in itself. Again, you'll see attached to it, we did our monthly traffic initiative, and all the numbers are on there in itself, and excuse me while I just look through this here. Our calls for service went down. We had 675 calls for service for October versus October of 2023, we had 706, so it was a decrease of 4.39%. And again, just keep in mind that those are generated calls along with the officers and calls of service from within the town. I did not, like I did for last month, I attached the information where we did certain calls for service in the area for complaints for traffic control in the Rising Ridge area. I noted that last month in itself, calling out that some of the calls that we got, the complaints were the actual residents. I chose not to do that in itself this time. Again, the information is in there in itself, again, with the Rising Ridge, the Main Street, and again, we had some complaints for traffic in the Backacre Corridor. So probably our next mission for next time in itself, if those complaints continue, which they didn't seem to be on the rise, then information will be on there also. But it is depicted in the report there what was done for the last traffic initiative. Other than that, for upcoming tomorrow, everyone I'm sure is aware of or hasn't taken place for, for voting, so hopefully everyone gets to exercise that right. Just to let everyone know, the Mount Arrie Police Department will be actively out there at the polling locations. So if anyone has any problems or concerns or anything like that, please, again, dial 911. They'll send us to the polling locations. And if it's something the officer can't handle, myself or one of the other first-line supervisors will handle that and try to work through it in itself, or any of the judging officials that are on site. Other than that, I don't have anything to add to my report. Is there any questions?
Any questions, comments?
I want to make one comment. It's interesting that all the kids, you guys dressed up as heroes, but all the kids dress up as you guys, so that was ironic.
Oh, there are, there are a few of them out there, some police officers, but it's nice and it's exciting. It's got good involvement, huge turnout for the trunk or treat. I think it worked out great because it connected from Watkins Park, from the Rails to Trails, and it was set up for their little spooky trail walk too, so great outcome.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, thank you, Chief.
All right, other than that, sir, in reference to tomorrow for the polling, may I be excused for that since I'm starting early tomorrow?
Sure.
Good, great, thank you. Maybe, no?
We'll call you back if we need you.
There's two officers on duty, sir. I'm sure they'll be able to help.
I said go ahead. It didn't matter what he said.
I think you're good with Heather's concurrents.
Ms. Heather? All right, well, thank you again. I appreciate it. You folks have a good night. Thank you.
All right, next up we have our mayor, council, and staff reports. We're going to lead this off with our mayor's report with Mayor Hushour.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Quickly on the PFAS update, since the September meeting, the contract was signed to design remediation for system stations two and five as well since October, and this shows up in the agenda, but it's a contract that I signed because it was under the limit that required the council approval, and I'm sure you guys would have approved it anyway, to keep things moving. But that's the contract for designing the new water service connection to the Twin Arch Mobile Home Park. That was signed earlier this month. Second of all, let's see, already mentioned Rails to Trails and, and that terrific ribbon cutting that we had. Thanks for all of you council members who showed up and the staff. You guys did great for us getting through that project. The hero banner program, or the application window closed, we've actually ordered the banners. We ordered 52 of them. They're coming in this week. We're going to try to have them on the polls by November 11th, which is Veterans Day. Regardless for the Veterans Day ceremony, which starts at 11 o'clock on, next Monday, on November 11th, we will have the, all the mini printouts of the banners available on a table, so you don't have to drive all the way down the road to see all the new banners. You'll be able to look at them set out on some tables. Okay, and those are going to be up for a year and a half. Okay. Next, the Historical Society is selling the 2024 Mount Arrie Christmas Tree Ornament. It is based on the Mount Arrie Rails to Trails patch, which was used, has been used as an appreciation handout to volunteers since the trail first, since the trails' first workdays in 2013. The ornament is selling for $20 and is available at the Mount Arrie Museum from noon to 4 on Saturdays and Sundays. As well, we have a quilt raffle that is going on, and the details of that are online. Nancy O'Brien's the one who made the quilt docs here, so you get to take the credit for Nancy tonight. That's a joke, okay? Little joke. It's not a big joke, just a little one, okay? Got to warn you. Okay, but anyway, so the Historical Society has a lot going on right now. Decorating for downtown, downtown for the holidays will occur on November 16th at 10:00 a.m. If you're willing, everyone will meet at the train station and progress from that location outwards, hanging up all the garland and lights and everything. The holiday preview, preview is on that evening as well, November 16th from 5 to 8 p.m. The Christmas tree lighting will be on December 7th, which is after a council meeting, so you'll get another reminder on that. And that's at 5:30 p.m., followed by the Christmas parade that will occur on December 7th at 6:30 p.m. Everyone knows tomorrow is Election Day, so I hope everybody gets out and votes at polling stations or Mount Arrie Middle School over on the Carroll County side, and then Twin Ridge Elementary on the Frederick County side. And the only other thing to add is with Monday being November 11th, that ceremony will include a hometown hero, a Colonel, who is very humble, so I won't say a lot about him, but he will be in one of the A-10s that is flying over. He says we'll have two A-10s provided if the weather is good. They're going to start basically circling down south. They'll come up past Anita's Liquors and head down Main Street and then bank back toward Baltimore once they get over approximately Mount Arrie Middle School. And so that'll be, they're flying over, this is exact, at 11:12 and 30 seconds. 11:12, because the National Anthem starts at 11:11, and they're going to be over Main Street 90 seconds after it starts. So it's an exciting day. The A-10s are being phased out, so in May, that squadron goes away, and this may be your last chance to watch an A-10 Thunderbolt, otherwise known as a Warthog, fly over Main Street at a pretty low altitude. So, I won't tell you how low, because that's up to them. So, okay, but that's Monday, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have our Recreation and Parks Board, Beautification Commission, and the Flatiron Task Force with Council Secretary Galetti.
Thank you, Council President. I will start with the Flatiron did not meet in October. Working on drafts of various fundraising solicitations, and I have notes from Larry Valet, who, thank you, we heard from him earlier. Oh, I read that. So then the mayor, I'm going to read what's in the mayor's report if anybody wants more details. It's a, it's a summary of all the grants that the Flatiron Task Force has been working on to get, and one thing I do want to talk about, I'm kind of excited about, is the Historical Society is doing their fundraising campaign, finishing up the fall campaign of ghost tours and haunted caboose, but they're currently auctioning off premier seating for the Christmas parade on the second floor of the Flatiron Building. So you'll be able to sit where that big window is, you and nine of your friends, and watch the parade from there. Some genius thought of that idea. I'm not sure who that was, but I love that idea. So, I think they'll have information coming up, the Historical Society, and where you could purchase those raffles, so get your raffle ticket for that, especially if it's a chilly night, because sometimes the parade is freezing cold. I don't know, maybe I'll sit up there instead. And then Parks and Rec meets the third Thursday of every month on Zoom. A Girl Scout troop, 2095, got a bronze award for a birdhouse project. Locations will be worked out with staff and the troop. East West Playground Climbing Pole was fixed, the ribbon cutting for Rails to Trails West, which we discussed. Kudos to the Mount Arrie Civil Patrol, who are supporting cleanup efforts for the October hurricanes, so they talked about that in Parks and Rec. Mount Scary Week, as we know, a lot of good events. Windy Ridge, check Facebook, because they are working on the trails. I saw they had something up that they were working on yesterday, I think. So they're working on trails, they're working on kind of cleanup, because trees are getting blown down and they're getting their signs up. I also want to note that Thanksgiving Day, there's a 5K. Look for information for that on MAMSA, because someone was asking me today if the sign boards were going to be up around town, letting people know about that, so I told them they need to contact this town staff. And then Parks, Nancy gave me these flyers, so we've got the holiday preview, November 16th, the mayor just went over that. Main Street Christmas, the mayor went over, but I don't want Nancy to get mad that I don't read these, so I'm just backing up the mayor. December 7th, tree lighting parade, and Jingle and Mingle on December 13th, but again, we'll hear about some of these things again in December, but a lot more fun events coming up. And then Beautification meets the third, Tuesday of every month here in Town Hall. They've been weeding and mulching to get the gardens ready for winter. They're purchasing perennials, trees and shrubs to get ready for planting in the spring. They are still planting more Kentucky coffee trees along Rails to Trails, and Wildwood Park, they're weeding, they're digging out a little culver, I think for drainage, and putting in granite blocks. So again, they continue working around town, so we appreciate everything they do. And that, their next meeting is November 19th at 7 o'clock at Town Hall, and that concludes my reports.
All right, thank you, Council Secretary. Next up, we have the Planning Commission with Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty light meeting on the 28th of October. Carroll County Planner Hannah announced that the housing study review will be done at the Carroll County Commissioners Meeting on November 6th. Frederick County Liaison Vanessa mentioned the NPRP again. The new proposed plan is out, and now the project is subject to approval from the Maryland Public Service Commission, so if you don't know much about that, reach out, get online, research it, because it directly affects not only Carroll County but Frederick County as well. And she mentioned that Myersville has removed all of their properties off of their growth element charts. New business, cigars and more. New signage for the store in Twin Arch Shopping Center was unanimously approved. The fire and EMS, APFO certification worksheet was also unanimously approved. We'll be using that moving forward. And discussion of the Wildwood Section 7 invariances by the owner and his attorney was closed without discussing any invariances. They were told to follow the correct process and discuss, discuss options with town staff. Master Plan Joint Workshop Number 2 will be discussed this evening. To find a date, location will be here at Town Hall. Our next PC meeting is Monday, November 5th, right before Thanksgiving at 7:30 here at Town Hall, and that concludes my October PC report.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Streets and Roads Commission and the EDC with Councilmember Demoter.
All right, thank you. EDC last met on September 25th, and at that time, the main topic was discussion of the draft 2023 master plan, business and economic growth elements. And so the commission pulled together a set of four main comments, and they provided those to the town planner and the Planning Commission Chair in October, and I believe those were provided to all of the council members to support the master planning workshop and the upcoming workshop. So, take a look at those as we get into that process. The next EDC meeting is planned for November 20th, and I think that might overlap with the Recycle Commission meeting. So we're going to have to sort that out. Yeah, but we'll, we'll work on that. We're trying to move it up because of Thanksgiving. All right, moving on to Streets and Roads. Streets and Roads last met on September 24th, so it's been a while. Again, we typically focus on a range of streets and roads, safety issues brought up by our citizens. We wrapped up the fall, slowdown for your hometown, Safe Streets Yard Sign Campaign. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 19th here in Town Hall. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the Recycling and Sanitation Commission and the Sustainability Commission with Councilmember Demoter, or sorry, Councilmember Munder.
All right, thank you, Council President. At least it's at the, at the, at the report stage and not the final stage of the meeting tonight. On the Sustainability Commission, I was unable to attend that due to a scheduling conflict with a family event. The next meeting is scheduled for December 18th, so please keep an eye out on the town webpage to see if it's held, because normally in December, most of the commissions just call it a year in November and let everyone enjoy the holidays. So please check the town website to see if this commission meeting will be hold or any of the commission meetings. The sanitation and recycling is scheduled for November 20th at 7:00 p.m. here in Town Hall, and I will check with them to see what we can do to try and help you out, Mr. Councilman Demoter, and see what comes of it. So, all righty, cool, and that concludes my report.
All right, next up, we have the Water and Sewer Commission and the Commission on Aging and Livability with myself. The Water and Sewer Commission has not met yet. We will actually meet this Wednesday, November 6th here at Town Hall. And COL is actually gearing up for our November 13th meeting with the Bureau of Aging and other county representatives. We plan to review the county's data on the senior center participation, building utilization, and how we can utilize the data provided to enhance the senior center. This is a major step forward in the right direction for COL and its goal to help improve the lives of Mount Arrie senior population, as well as the senior center as a whole. This is one of our founding reasons for establishing COL, so getting everybody together for this meeting is a, is a major step in the right direction, and a lot of kudos goes to Adele and the other members of COL for getting this meeting pulled together. So, look for updates on that in the December meeting. And that will conclude my report. We will now go to our town attorney, Mr. Tom McCarron.
Over the last month, I worked on the annexation a little bit. That's in front of you later on in the agenda. Assisted the Maryland, I'm sorry, the Mount Arrie Police Department in responding to a number of subpoenas for documents mainly in civil and criminal cases, and also attended the Planning Commission meeting. That is my report.
All right, we all have copies of the Town Administrator Report, the Code Enforcement Report, and the Zoning Administrator Report. Anything to add from the reports?
Nope.
All right. We'll now move on to new business. Up first on new business, we have a recommendation for approval for the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main upgrade. We are going to skip this one because we first have to approve the budget amendment to that award. So after we approve the budget amendment, which is later on, we will then come back to this. So next up will be a recommendation for approval of the architectural engineering design of the Flatiron Building. I'll leave it to Barney Quinn. Do you have any explanation?
Okay, sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is taking what we looked at, the option two previously, taking basically all the site improvements out of it, just concentrating on the building, and not change anything as far as roadways or sidewalks or, except for adding an ADA parking space and, you know, safe access into the, into the, what would be the middle floor on the backside. That'd be the easiest place to provide ADA. The elevator would provide access to, ADA access to the rest of the floors. And so we were able to reduce the scope by just concentrating on the building to get it down to $175,921. And as Larry had pointed out, that, you know, $150,000 is already, we haven't grant money for, so covers most of the costs. But the recommendation is, is to award the Flatteron Building Design to Brendan Associates, who did the concept plans, in the amount of $175,921.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the
I make a motion to approve the town engineer recommendation for the approval of this contract to Brendan and Associates.
All right. I will second. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions and some thoughts. So a question for Barney. So now we're really specking in the design of the building. And my question is, if we proceed with this design work, does that suddenly limit the potential options for what we want that building to be? What I mean is, let's say we decide that we want to privatize it. We want to, we want to make it a business, a coffee shop, a restaurant, something that requires lots of plumbing or, you know, different uses. So by doing the design that's going to come next, is that limiting us to what that building could potentially be used for?
I don't see it limiting us. I mean, it certainly helps us. We'll have, you know, enough water. The water line will get upsized to include sprinklers. So we'll have adequate water there. We'll have electric, you know, unless there's a huge demand for electric, but you could always add a service if you had to after the fact. As far as interior walls, you could move interior walls around in the future if you decide you want to use it for a different purpose. But having everything upgraded, you're, we're basically doing the shell building and having all, you know, new plumbing, electric, lighting, all that kind of stuff upgraded.
And I have a few other, a few other comments. Just give me, give me a warning. So I'll tell you, I'll tell you my concerns, and these are concerns. Okay? So when the task force gave us their memo on March 25th, and they gave us the three totally integrated, fleshed out options for the Flatiron Building. And the language in the memo says, "Each design envisions a historically renewed Flatiron Building," okay, listen, "at the center of a public amenity and outdoor space to serve Mount Airy for the next century." Okay? And this is, this is my, this is, this is my concern. We went through three designs, concept designs, that were integrated, and they addressed all of the longstanding issues our Main Street has, has had over the last 30 some odd years. They addressed parking, the narrowness of Main Street, the safety of Main Street, pedestrian safety and access of the sidewalk by the Flatiron Building. Those, those things were the main drivers for the concern about the Flatiron Building. And so the council downselected the option two. And I remember at the time, I said, you know, that involves shifting the roadway. When are you going to talk to MDOT? And I've been asking that question, and I don't think, to date, you've talked to MDOT. And I said, well, that might be a rate-limiting step if you can't move the road, because that's what was going to give you some pedestrian sidewalk. Anyway, that's getting into details. My concern is, you've now, to me, basically said, you know what? This is all too difficult. It's going to be too costly. We're going to rip all that stuff up. We're just going to focus on the building. We're going to fix up the inside of the building. That estimate was $1.7 million in your, in your memo. So let's call that $2 million instead of $3.7 million. My concern is, now the focus is just going to be fixing up the building, and we're never going to get to the main issues at hand, which are pedestrian safety, roadway safety, and parking. And I know the memo says, you know, when we get there, we'll eventually address those later on. My concern is, once that building is fixed up, no one's ever going to want to spend any more money on fixing up the main issues that, to me, are important for revitalization of our downtown. I think we are cheating the future of Mount Airy's downtown zone by not focusing on all of those safety issues that need to be addressed. So I would have rather you have packaged this in a way that kept your original option two, but just said, phase one is going to be this, but we're still going to do all these other things. But that's not the way this package reads. This package reads to me as, we're waving the white flag, none of that other stuff's going to get done, and we're just going to focus on the building. And, and I heard several members of the task force basically say, you know, I don't care about patios or sidewalks or the Main Street. I just want the building safe. And I'll say now what I said back then. To me, my role as a council member is to look out for the benefits in the future of the town of Mount Airy. And that means a good plan for revitalizing the downtown zone for the future of Mount Airy. So that is, that's my disappointment with what you've done here. That's, those are my, my thoughts.
Mayor, sir.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I mean, we're trying to eat an elephant with this building, to draw an analogy to it. There's, there's a lot that needs to be done. The directive that I gave the staff when, when we came up with, with this proposal was, we can't, we can't take that big of a bite. We can't, we can't design everything around it and the building at the same time, because that's going to be over, what was it, Barney, 300 and something? Well, no, I'm talking about the design cost. What's going to be way too much.
Yeah, it was going to be at least as much, just getting into, before we get to final design.
Yeah. So, so I said, what, how can we limit this down? The most important thing, in my opinion, and this is debatable, I think, between you and me, which is fine. You know, I want the, the building fixed up. I want the, you know, the, the structure taken care of. Whereas it sounds like you're a lot more interested in everything that's around it. We're not ignoring everything that's around it. It's just my first bite is the building itself. It sounds like perhaps your first bite would have been everything around it. That's fine. But in my opinion, this is a bite that we can get into, and I think it's more important to look at the building itself before we look at everything around it. I understand what you're talking about in terms of contacting MDOT and, and talking about the roadway and everything, but the council's decision was to keep the building where it's at. We'll have to figure out the rest of it, you know, as it, as it comes along. This is, this is a bite at it. And it's better than sitting here stagnating as we've done for over a decade. So, in my opinion. So.
I just, I have to have a follow-on comment, but.
Anybody else want to speak?
I have one comment, because people watch us, and then they watch our reruns, and then they watch what's on Facebook. So I have to completely refute a comment Councilmember Demoter just said. I've been involved with the Flatiron Task Force since inception, and I've never heard a task force, Flatiron Task Force member say, I don't care about Main Street. So that, I want to make sure that's clear, because I heard what you said, and I'm thinking, someone's going to watch that and go, these people don't care about Main Street? They don't care about Patty? Isn't it? That Main Street really got to me. I've never heard a Flatiron Task Force member say, I don't care about Main Street, and I don't care about those things. So I just have to say that's, from what I've seen and what I've been, and I've been to all the meetings, that's not a true statement. So I just want to make sure it's clear.
So maybe that was shorthand, but I, I, I do remember I was at a task force meeting. And they may not have said it that way, but they said, you know, my priority is just fixing up the building. I, I'm not, you know, a patio isn't that important to me, and parking in Main Street, that's not what my focus is. They did, they did say something like that. It wasn't like they don't care about the other stuff, but that was clearly their priority. And to the mayor, it's not quite the way you described it. It's not an either-or thing. I'm not just focused on the other stuff first. I'm focused on a true integrated plan, which option two kind of was. It said, all these things need to be done to deliver this, as the memo says, a public amenity and outdoor space with, with the building. It's a, it's a total package that, by doing all of that and providing the parking and dealing with the road, all of that, to me, is then sellable, because now you are trying to revitalize for the future, position us for the future, improvements to the Main Street and the whole, the whole package. So I, I want to be clear on that. It's not this or that. My concern is, the way your package is written, I'm afraid the other stuff is now non-integrated, and it's going to get lost in the sauce, and it'll be so far addressed, it may never, ever get funded. And then all of this, I mean, and I want to applaud you guys, because you're, you're using the grant money with just a little bit of town funding to do the design, and that's good. But sooner or later, we're going to get to, like, real money here. This, this is like 1.7 to $2 million, and the town just doesn't have that money. So I'm hoping that grants are going to be the majority of, of the funding stream for, for the project. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just got a quick comment here, Council President. Thank you. I've always viewed the plan as, as, you know, we need to do it eventually, sooner or later, and this is just a step in a multi-step design process. It's focusing, it sounds like mainly on the interior and the structure of the building and everything of that nature. So I believe this is a wise move to do it, if money is short right now from the state and grants, and to allow to get it moving. I mean, it's better to have something planned than not to plan. And I'm also concerned, seeing that it's a state grant, a DHCD grant. We're coming up against budget session, the General Assembly Session. The state is short on funding. I would rather start encumbering some of the grant money that we have received for this, just in case they start pulling it back, and anything that's unencumbered will get pulled back. And that forces everybody to start back from square one and could delay the project even more, more so. So it's good to have a design ready to go, and then we can start applying for other types of grants to finish it, to even do the outside of it. But we need at least a design to say, hey, we've done it. We're serious about it moving, moving forward, too. So this is a good first step, in my view. So thank you, Council President.
Anyone else have any questions, comments?
Just a last quick comment. So listening to the conversation, I, I think people kind of know where my position is on this building, and it's not really my position. It's, I'm just reflecting what, what the citizens have told me through the, through the town community survey. But after listening to the conversation, given that it's only going to use a little bit of town money, and you're using grant money for the design of the building, I'm going to take your word as a leap of faith, that I'm hoping that we will continue with an integrated plan to address all the other components, and that, that, that full Concept 2 drawings, those come along with that building. So given that, I'm willing to see the design work done for the building, again, as long as we're not boxing ourselves into what becomes of the building. It could get privatized. It could turn into a restaurant. It could be lots of things if, if there was a private interest there. So, thanks.
All right. So we currently have a motion to approve the architectural and engineering design of the Flatiron Building for the amount of $175,921 of Brendan &amp; Co. It has been seconded. So all in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next on the agenda was the recommendation for approval of the engineering design of the Mobile Home Park Water Connection. As the mayor previously stated, that was under the threshold to require council approval. It has already been signed by him, and we are moving along with that process. So thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have a recommendation for approval to award the snow removal services contract. Once again, I'll relinquish to Mr. Barney Quinn.
Thank you. So this is a first time that we're doing this, at least in the 20 years I've been here, putting out a snow removal contract. The idea is to, instead of waiting for DPW to finish the roads and then start working on the parking lots and things downtown, is try to get those things start working at the same time. So by putting out a contract for those items, Carl did mention that, I didn't show that these, these rate, rates in the back, they are hourly rates. It doesn't say that. But it says it in the contract, but not here. So just to give you an example, there's items one through seven. It doesn't mean every snow requires all seven items. So whatever items are needed for that snow, if it's a light snow, they might only need a, you know, something to do some salting. So $980 per hour is not necessarily needed for, you know, the smaller snows. You might, you know, regular snow, you might need three hours, so you'd need three times that amount. So we did bid it out, received two bids. The map shows you the parking lots and the sidewalks, and the green and the yellow of the areas that this includes. And we received two bids, and Ross Contracting, we found to be the lowest responsive bidder. So we recommend awarding to them at, at these rates.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick question, maybe one or two. Never mind. I, I had it and I lost it. I'm not going to come, come back right now, Council President. But no, the hourly rate was one of them. It's a local contractor, so that's good. And, oh, here we go. The money for this is already in the, is in the budget, correct, I believe, for the snow removal?
We do have money budgeted for snow removal. It all depends on how much snow we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Barney was saying, we don't, we may not need all of those services, depending on how. So yes, there is money for snow removal in the budget.
Okay.
Unfortunately, until we have a snow event, we have no idea.
No, no, I'm totally aware that it could be one, two, none. So, no. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
It was a blower two years ago, so we're not going to get any.
Yeah. Yes. And thank you for answering the, the other questions I had too, Barney.
I do have a question.
Sure.
And this, this is interesting. This, I'm remembering something that came up at an EDC meeting. So if you go to the facilities list page, you go down A2, it says, Flatiron Building Parking Lot to include the sidewalks along Main Street and Park Avenue. So, so basically, they're, they're going to, they're going to plow the sidewalks on Main Street. All right. That's what this is?
Just what's in front of our, the town's buildings.
The town's buildings. Okay.
So the Flatiron, Town Hall, the parking lots that are owned by the town, the museum, the.
Okay. But not in front of the businesses?
No, just, just what's in front of the towns. In other words, what, what Brian's crew would, would do, the public works crew would do normally.
Okay. All right, then.
That's the yellow on the map?
Yeah.
That's the yellow, yes.
That's, that's fine. Well, I'll say it real quick, and it's not going to get answered, but there were, there were some questions from businesses saying, you know, the state highway comes through, and they plow Main Street, and they push the snow by plowing Main Street up onto the sidewalk or into the parking spaces. And then the businesses, like, there's a question of who, who gets rid of that snow in, in the middle there? And they were saying, in the past, that the town used to do that. Does the town still come through and, and do that?
I got an answer. We actually have a policy in our policy, but that deals with, with shoveling the snow in front of businesses, and they are responsible for it.
Okay.
Heather, are you going to anything to add to that? I think we reviewed the policy about a couple of weeks ago when this came up.
So again, it's even when, so a business goes out, they shovel the sidewalk in front of their business. The state plows come through, plow the snow, they spray that up onto the sidewalk, and then the businesses will have to go out and.
Yeah, but in fairness, I mean, it's same deal with our driveways.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But we do have a policy that addresses it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the Snow Removal Service Maintenance Contract to Ross Contracting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of approving the Ross Contracting bid for Snow Removal Services, please. removal services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, thank you, Barney. All right, next up, we have a bond release for approval with the Twin Arch Business Park, Section 4, Lot 16A S-19-0031, Priority Install LLC. Mr. Quinn?
So, yeah, this is approving everything except the 10%, which is part of the warranty period, until the warranty period is up, but everything else has been completed. And apparently, the county had signed off on their items, sediment control, and stormwater management. So, yeah, it's approving everything except the, you see that 10%, $19,649.
All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Twin Arch Business Park, Section 4, Lot 16A, for the bond release. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the bond release for the Twin Arch Business Park, Section 4, Lot 16A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Barney. I think you're off the hook for the rest of the night. Commission appointments and reappointments, I will now go to Mayor House Hour.
First appointment is Mark Moxley to be appointed to the Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
Go ahead, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Moxley.
Go ahead, I'll let you since it's your...
To the Water and Sewer Commission, do we have a second?
Second.
He jumped that before me. It was you this time.
Any discussion?
Who put before Mark changes his mind?
All right, all in favor of approving Mark Moxley to the Water and Sewer Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Here's another one that should go fast. Mike Regal, reappointment to the Board of Parks and Recreation.
I will make a motion that we appoint Mike Regal to Board of Parks and Recreation.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of reappointing Mike Regal to the Board of Parks and Recs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up, we are to ordinances and resolutions. First up, the Annexation Resolution 2024-46 for 1.3189 acres of land located at 4111 Twin Arch Road. This is for adoption. I know we had an amendment to the annexation, so Carl, if you wouldn't mind, if you want to...
I was going to make an amendment, number 5.5 on page nine, that was going to require the 50-foot buffer to be put in forest conservation, but upon, and this was the attempt to basically preserve as much natural foliage and forest that was there, but upon second thought and looking at the land itself and the, I want to say, the plat of the land being brought in, it would not be in easily attainable condition for the landowners, so I would make the recommendation for my amendment to be stricken and just approve it as it was, minus the 5.5 on page nine. I believe the conditions of, and what I was trying to accomplish can be achieved through other means with a 50-foot buffer that the town would require under normal zoning regulations. And if it wasn't annexed, the county has a less stringent buffer for the industrial land. So, we're getting a better deal if it's annexed in.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So, I will make a motion that we accept the Annexation Resolution 2024-46, but in the copy we have striking that 5.5 out.
All right, I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yes. So, as I always do, to, I always try and go to planning commission meetings and other meetings, because I like to go and get the information firsthand and unfiltered so that I can make my own informed decision on behalf of the citizens that I represent. So, I was at the planning commission meeting where this request for annexation came up, and I listened to the conversation, I listened to the discussions. I also looked at the town planner staff report, and I also looked at a public comment that was sent to us by a citizen. And a couple of things jump out at me. First of all, and this is something I always look for in all of our ordinances and annexations and such, and on page 3D, it says, "Annexation of the property and classification in the town's industrial district is considered to be in the public interest, convenience, and welfare of the citizens of the town." And it's my opinion that this does not meet that statement. The 2013 master plan did not identify this property as one of the areas intended for future town annexation, and I try and follow the master plan. The staff report identified a number of concerns, one of them being that the need for development is sensitive to its location as a well-recharge area, the impact of the proposed development on town water, sewer, and road capacity, and then, another one is the impact on Twin Arts Road and East Ridgeville Boulevard from the proposed secondary access points to the site. And then, looking at, you know, we're working on the 2023 master plan, and regarding roadways, specifically Twin Arts Road, there's a statement in our draft 2023 master plan that says, "In addition, although there is no reported ADT data available to perform the volume capacity analysis, the town staff concludes that Twin Arts Road is currently built below standard for the value of traffic it is handling." So, I'm just concerned about all the potential impacts this is going to bring. We already have serious impacts on Twin Arts Road. This is going to bring in, you know, this piece of property may be a key to facilitating use of the larger industrial zone property that's already there. I'm all for property rights. I have to say, at the planning commission meeting, I specifically asked the petitioner, I said, "Why now? Why do you want to rezone this now? Why wasn't this done earlier?" And I didn't get any answer. And then, I asked, "What is the intended use of this with your other land that you own there?" And I didn't get an answer. And so, all of these things combined, and even in the staff report, there's a sentence that says, "A development plan submitted accompanying the annexation petition would allow the planning commission to determine some of the impacts and better understand the broader implication of this parcel's annexation." And to my understanding, I don't know that a development plan was submitted accompanying this annexation plan. So, for all those reasons, on behalf of concerns of citizens and my own views, I will not support this annexation. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll take a stab at, because some of these things about the Twin Arch Road is one of the reasons why I did what I did, too. Also, I believe this was being annexed into the land, the way I understand, excuse me, into the town is the way I understand it, was that during the 2013 master plan update, the town boundary line in the plan was drawn over the boundary of the land. So, it was like, it was almost a mistake in the 2013 plan, and it was excluded due to a mapping error or drawing on the map. That's why I believe it's being requested to be brought into the town now. I believe it was a request, I believe, didn't the town ask them to bring it in, John, or am I mistaken, or the request, due to the mapping error?
We don't usually request...
Okay.
But it was invisible with the line weight of the boundary limits, of the ultimate boundary limits of the town. So, it was kind of covering the whole parcel, so I can understand why it was missed.
Yeah, it was, basically, it was a combination of three to four parcels over there when it was originally discussed in 2013. So, it just straightens up the boundary of the town, too. It's 1.3 acres. I do get the, I do understand the Twin Arts Road concern, but it could also be not put onto that road, the entry and exit to it. It can also be brought on out into East Ridgeville. There is an existing old dirt road where the Ridgeville used to be. So, it really depends on what is presented before the town for the final development plan on that. And I'm sure that as part of any type of development agreement, that if it had any access and entryway onto Twin Arts Road, there would be an intersection upgrade study or a need study to upgrade that road there. So, this may be, not saying we need it, but could be a way to upgrade or look at the potential impacts or upgrades of Twin Arts Road. If it comes out that way, there might not be any potential to come out there, might be East Ridgeville. There is an existing road that's on the maps back there, it's just gated off back to the property. So, that concludes my comments, sir.
All right, thank you. I, having any other here, I wanted to open it up to the petitioner's counsel or any representative for him, if he would like to speak. Want to come up?
Thank you. For the record, my name's Bruce Dean, I represent Pank Land, the petitioner in this, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to thank Councilmember Mundur for his recommendation of remove Section 5.5. Mr. Pank clearly, and I believe, submitted an email to the record in opposition to that section to answer Councilmember Dottamore's comments. You know, there is no development plan at this stage, so, but we did have several discussions with Mr. Breeding, and believe that this property was intended to be part of the town limits, that it is with it. If you read the staff report, it is within the growth area. It's just not specifically identified as an annexation area, but it is within the town's growth area. 1.3 acres is not going to change really the development potential of Mr. Pank's property, it does just straighten up a line. And as Councilmember Mundur said, access, we don't even know yet because there's no development plan, but it could clearly access through the rest of the property and not even have any traffic go on to Twin Arts Road. But that's so premature, we can't even tell you at this stage what the answer to that would be. No development plan has been done because the property hasn't been annexed, and so, Mr. Pank hasn't really even decided how to incorporate it into the rest of the project. So, we think it's basically a no-brainer, the property, you know, can remain in the county and not be part of the town. It's not going to really change the development potential of Mr. Pank's property, but it does even up the property line and could be used as a good area for forestation or buffering and that sort of thing. But I, you know, it's obviously within your purview as to whether you want to annex it or not, but we would ask that you do that in accordance with the annexation agreement and annexation resolution as they were originally presented to us prior to the public hearing last month. So, with that, I can answer any questions you might have. Mr. Pank apologizes that he was unable to be here tonight.
Yeah, I have one question. So, I'm looking at, and it's clear that it's, you know, pretty much almost a rectangle with this crazy piece in here. So, between Pank, one parcel, one, two, do you know the total acreage back there?
I do not have that number.
So, the total acreage of the industrial parcels is about 50 acres.
50, so...
So, 10 acres is the long strip.
And is that long strip of which 1.31 seems to have been kind of sliced out, so that's what we're, we would be...
I'm not sure about that, but yeah, so there's...
But it's about 50 back there, sounds about...
50 total is the industrial, current zoned industrial...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other concerns, questions, anything? All right, so right now, we have a motion to accept the Annexation Resolution 2024-46 as originally written, not to include Councilmember Mundur's additions. It has been seconded, and now, all in, what I would like to know is, all in favor of approving Annexation Resolution Number 2024-46 as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. All right, well, now, on Ordinance 2024-22, a budget amendment to remove $215,000 from the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade. This is for adoption. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to remove $215,000 from the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade.
All right, I will second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of adopting Ordinance 2024-22 to remove $215,000 from the wastewater treatment plant lab upgrade, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. And last, Ordinance 2024-23, a budget amendment to add $85,000 for the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main replacement. I will make a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to adopt Ordinance 2024-23 to add $85,000 for the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main replacement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, with that being said, we're going to bounce back to our new business, now that we have the money, and do the recommendation for the approval of the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main upgrade. Mr. Quinn, just a brief summary on that?
Sure. So, we've had this on my list for almost 20 years, once I realized that one of our water mains is actually a galvanized line. It's not just a service line to a house, it's actually a water main, goes to several houses. But, you know, we started with Main Street, then we did Center Street, Cross Street, and recently Prospect Road, and just having the extra money in from the lab that we didn't need, and we need to get this allocated to meet the ARPA requirements by the end of the year. This just seemed to be the perfect project, finally, to get it done. So, that's why we're recommending doing Rockwell and Bellevue water main. We did get the, their estimate based on piggybacking our own Prospect Road contract with Metro Industries. They show the estimate comes in at $353,000, which I agree with. I did add a 10% contingency, because when you start digging, you just never know what you're going to run into. So, that's why the $388,000, up to $388,000, but we're asking for approval to Metro Industries.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, a question. So, in your memo, you say that, so obviously, the Prospect Road Water Main Replacement Project, that was done by Metro. Did Metro do the other projects, or just this Prospect Road one?
Only the Prospect Road one.
Only the Prospect Road one, okay. So, here is, I'm sure my fellow council members are probably all going to support this, and I do support the work, and that's why I supported the budget, but your memo says regarding the Prospect Road Water Main Replacement Project, it says, "This project was done successfully, and the town was pleased with their work." And I just have to say, as a representative of citizens who were really not pleased at all with how the Prospect Road Water Main Project got implemented, and, you know, when things are successful, it means everybody had a hand in making it successful, and when things go really bad, everybody probably has a little bit of a hand in why it went bad. But nevertheless, I feel like you're rewarding a contractor to do more work for the town when it appears to me that maybe... to do more work for the town when it appears to me that maybe, maybe it wasn't such good work. So, you may be pleased, but my standard of excellence for government work is a little different than that. So I'm not going to, I'm just not going to support this particular contractor initiative. So, thank you.
May I rebut for just a second? Tearing up a 100-year-old water line in the middle of Prospect Road is not an easy feat in a town that is loaded with rocks. Could the timing have been a little bit better? Maybe, but, you know, we've had mild winters, and we rolled the dice on that. Thanks to the council, I mean, you guys approved spending extra money to asphalt the entire thing. I don't think it's fair to throw people under the bus on a project like that that was so monumental. There's no way to make everybody happy on a project like that. Tearing up the middle of a road, a main road that leads, you know, out to our westernmost development, I just, I'm okay with Barney's wording because, you know, people were upset, people are always going to be upset. Believe me, I hear it all the time, so, but...
Yeah, and I think most of it was the patching work on the roads. I mean, that really was. Not everything's perfect in every project. Doesn't mean it can't be successful, even if it's not perfect. But we will work on that. The good thing is Rockwell and Bellevue are not the highly traveled road like Prospect, but still, we want to have a decent patching job and make sure they're working through that. So, that is a lessons learned from that project that we'll carry on. But as far as the water main, the work they did, as far as getting that connected, and the final product, I think is a success, so, if you want to look at it that way.
All right. With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main upgrade as recommended by town staff to Metro Industries in the amount of $353,000?
Well, preferably up to $388,000.
With a 10% contingency, yeah, yeah, for that amount. Do we have a second?
Second.
Right, any further discussion?
Just a quick question to Barney. The 2-inch to 8-inch, the existing line over there, how old is that? I mean, a galvanized 2-inch seems pretty old to me. It's probably corroded and reduced in diameter, wouldn't you?
Most likely leaking.
Leaking, yeah.
I don't know the age of it, I'll be honest.
Okay, but it's better to upgrade it because you said, according to the most recent lead and copper rule revisions, I mean, we need to provide them with safe drinking water. And with the upcoming lead rule and lead replacement coming to town soon, too, we're going to be getting a lot more requests for water main upgrades or water lines. So I just want to make sure, I mean, if you're happy with this, the overall work that this company did at the end of the day, as the mayor indicated, of course, we rolled the dice for it. The patching was not the world's best over there, but it was winter time, but I thank the residents of Mount Airy that had to endure that while it happened, and I'm sure that any complaints brought forward to town address when the supply line broke by accident or something of that nature. So, I'm happy with awarding this to Metro Industries.
And we did give them seven months, and they finished within seven months, and...
This one will be quicker.
They did not ask for change orders, except for when it came time for the baby, so...
Yeah. But they are planning on doing it in a lot of time since it's the school over that way, correct?
So we're in for summertime, you know, between school years.
Okay, cool, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Any further questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving, I lost my spot, the Rockwell Avenue and Bellevue Avenue water main upgrade in the amount up to $388,000 to Metro Industries? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you. Now we will come back to our unfinished business section, and we are going to schedule a second joint work session with the Planning Commission to review and comment on the final draft 2023 Master Plan. We have this workshop tentatively scheduled for November 20th at 6:30 PM here at Town Hall, which I know is a date that you guys were both discussing, working around. So, you'll have to work around that being scheduled as well.
All right, not a problem.
You're probably not going to have your meetings.
Now, I'll talk to Mr. Tarbord on that one. It isn't Thanksgiving, so maybe we'll work something out.
Yeah, I didn't want to chime in and say that.
We'll let them come and give comments on the...
So, is everybody okay with the November 20th, 6:30 here at Town Hall?
Yes.
All right, good. So, we will schedule the joint work session with the Planning Commission to review and comment on the final draft 2023 Master Plan here November 20th at 6:30 PM. All right, we don't have any closed sessions this month, so I will make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning this town council meeting? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. See everyone next month.